At the January 8th meeting, we had adjourned to executive session and we are now returned to public session. Our first item of business would be the approval of items by consensus. Superintendent Benton.
Good evening, everyone. We have approval of the minutes of December 11th, regular session, and we have a set of warrants, FS-07, FS-08, FS-09, 306, 07, 08, G-406, R-208, R-209, L-20, L-21, L-23, L-24, L-27, payroll of 12-4, 12-18, and 1-1, CB, circuit breaker 03, and then number five, I took L-22 out, put it as number five because that involved reimbursement for the MASC.
Okay. All right, here we go. We'll take a motion to approve the minutes of December 11th, to approve, let me see, G-406 row, L-20, L-20. With L-22 out to the side. Okay, so would anyone like to make a motion for those?
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Burns. Do we have a second? Thank you, Mrs. Carroll. All those in favor, that would be unanimous. Linda, payroll warrants, we'll have a motion for the payroll warrants.
I'll make a motion for the payroll warrants.
Good, thank you, Mr. Mullis. Second, all those in favor? Five in favor, two abstain, Linda, Mrs. Carroll, and Mrs. Kane. Okay, warrant CB-03. Mrs. Punish.
I make a motion for warrant CB-03.
Thank you. Second, Mrs. Boushade. All those in favor? That would be six and one abstain, Mrs. Burns. And then, yes.
Sorry, didn't interrupt, but when you took the vote for the minutes, I abstained from that because I was not at that meeting.
Oh, sorry, Linda, we have one abstention on the minutes. Thank you. Dr. Quick?
Thank you.
Thank you, okay. Next, we have the special ed 06, 07, and 08. Mr. Mullis?
Motion to approve special ed 06, 07, and 08.
And a second, Mrs. Boushade. All those in favor? Okay, six and one abstention, Mrs. Burns. And food service 07, 08, 09, Mrs. Burns.
I make a motion to approve food service 07, 08, 09.
And second, Dr. Quick, all those in favor? One abstention, Mrs. Carroll. And L-22. Dr. Quick?
Motion to approve warrant L-22.
Second, Mr. Mullis. All those in favor? Okay, 1, 2, 3, 4 in favor, and abstain, Mrs. Burns, Mrs. Boushade, and Mrs. Kane. Did I skip?
Nope.
Yay. We're getting this down here. Thank you so much. Oh, and it's a new year, and we're glad to see you back, Jessica.
Thank you.
Thank you, hope you had happy holidays.
You too.
Good, thank you.
So I know it's been a while, so some of these date back a couple months. First, the academic decathlon had a contest this Saturday before Thanksgiving. They won two silver medals in social science and art, one gold medal in math, one bronze medal in math, and honorable mentions in music and history. Strings and band both had their concerts in early December. The cram jam for freshmen took place last night to teach them about study habits and tips for mid-years and finals. Auditions for the one act, which will go to the METG One Act Festival, took place in early December, and they are now in rehearsal. And mid-year exams begin on January 16th and end on January 19th.
We just get back and it's time for mid-year exams. It's interesting, good. Anybody have any questions? It's nice to know we're always busy at the high school. Thank you, Jessica, we appreciate you coming. All right, our next item of business would be the superintendent's report.
I have a personnel report for you, listing resignations and replacements. Second thing, iPods for wounded veterans. I'd like to welcome back Mr. Cardello and company for, who wants to give you an update on what's been going on. Good evening.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Paul Tell, I'm the chairman of iPods for Wounded Veterans, United States Air Force, 1966, 1970. This is Robert Regan, United States Coast Guard. We are both Wilmington residents. I've been one for 38 years. And Bob, how many years?
I've been here 37 years.
37, so we're in the 30s.
Almost a townie, but I'm all right.
Over the past seven, no, over the past several months, I have met with the superintendent of schools, Joanne Benton, I'll just say multiple times, to say the least. And you almost thought I was an employee at her office. But we're here to celebrate the town of Wilmington and the school system, and our superintendent, and recognize Wilmington High School teacher Dawn Martel, and Christian Tarza from the Wilmington schools. This project, I don't even know how to go back how it started in 2010. And if you told me the first grade class in the Woburn Street Schools with 21 students would leave three years later on December 5th, that I would go to Walter Reed National Medical Center and Fort Belvoir Community Hospital and deliver 5,000 letters, I would not believe it in a million years, which 1,000 letters came from the Wilmington school system. So I'm gonna give a round of applause myself. Ms. Tarza created this program, she developed it, she's been named Teacher of the Year by the United States Army, and we have student Caitlin Casala as a Student of the Year by the United States Army. We'll make the announcement tonight that Silverman's Letter is in the running again for Student of the Year by the United States Army and Navy. So that's two out of three years. This is what we're producing on a Wilmington High School. So congratulations to Silver, just to be a finalist is really a special thought. But before all the school committee members, we have a very special letter that was sent to me. It kind of signs, sums up iPods for Wounded Veterans and Dear Soldier. It's about a community galvanizing to help the injured veterans. Unfortunately, this war is 12 years old, and they're doing three, seven tours of duty over there. And we see them all, we see all Massachusetts soldiers first, then New England, and the rest of the country. We see them all. This year, we saw 434 amputees and brain injury and severely burned soldiers, man and woman. Our Dear Soldier program is taking off. We got 1,000 letters from the Miami-Dade County School System, the VFW in Miami through the teams has sent up Afghans when we went there, and Teamster Local 677 out of Waterbury, Connecticut, they sent officials to meet the troops, this was their first time there, with Teamster Local 769, sending the Human Rights Commission Director from the teams to, on this past trip. Our cameraman Dawn Lea has been on 11 trips, our sawman Ron Bouchary's been on 10 trips. Each trip has their own, something happens with Dawn and Ron and myself, it never goes the way it's supposed to go. We always have the curveball come up. So this trip, we had one, we were short a driver, the co-chairman Wayne Fox asked his friend Angel Santiago from Lawrence, Mass., a graduate of Central Catholic, to come out and help us out. He came. We're in the hospital, we have a very severely Spanish soldier that was, had to go right into surgery, but his wife was only 21 years old, she could barely speak English. Angel came in and translated, he had to see it to believe it. He's speaking Spanish, English, Spanish, English, you know, you know, and he says, then I says, wait a minute, give him one of everything. Don't even ask, just give him one of everything. But from that, what happened there is that, you know, we had the Human Rights Commission Director with us, he's in Miami. We have a lot of, Florida's one of a lot of, lot of places where you have a lot of injured soldiers. So the teams says they're gonna create a bilingual director to help out the injured soldiers in Florida, from what he saw there. So it's different things like that that happen on each trip. I don't know what it is, but something happens that always, remember, last time it was a soldier reading to his two little girls the letters that we caught, we caught on camera. So I, like I said, I wish I could take everybody to the hospitals and just see them, and you'll get the biggest hug that you ever could think of, saying that you came and saw injured soldiers, especially when you see Massachusetts soldiers, or somebody from New England. But this town has made their mark. I have to go over to middle school by far, two years in a row, the best middle school of all the schools we have. They write the best letters, they put a lot of thought into it. And we have to recognize Chris Frye in that, he's really pushed hard on it. And Christine McMenon, the principal over there, has really done a wonderful job. So I just wanna really acknowledge the middle school. Some of these letters, you can tell when you start reading them, what it means, what it means to, you know, to sit down and think about how an injured soldier's at there laying in bed, but what a student can say to them. And they really mean a lot. So we left letters in front of all the school committee members about this letter. It kind of signs, sums up what it is. We have two of them. We got acknowledged from the director at Walter Reed, which usually never happens. And we have this letter from, a letter of thank you, basically to the town of Wilmington and iPods. Bob, why don't you read the Walter Reed letter? This is from FSC Jake Young, Walter Reed National Medical Center in Bethesda, Maryland.
This is a Christmas card that he sent to the organization, really, and he's just got a short note inside. "Paul, I just wanted to say how much I really appreciated your visit, all of the cards of support, and the wonderful gifts. Your visit and all of the support from the community brought tears to my eyes, very meaningful. Merry Christmas, Sergeant Jake Young, Walter Reed 7E."
So that's a person that deals with 45 organizations, you know, and for him, this means a lot, really, believe me, this card. So it's addressed to iPods, but this is to every student, every teacher, everybody who's doing it, put their time. This is what it's about. Okay, so now I'm just gonna read this one and make this short. "I just want to thank you for the recent trip to Fort Belvoir. I received a nook. I don't know whether I'll ever take it out of the package. It may actually be one of my most prized possessions along with the quilt I was recently given in the cards and letters I have received. After I was medevac from Afghanistan and had to accept that I would no longer be physically able to continue my military service, combined with seeing all the faces of the young soldiers I have transported during my three deployments as a flight medic, I felt as though I was feeling my commitment to my fellow soldiers and country. I feel most unworthy of this kindness and caring beyond a gift, yet so touched by it. I do not have words for gratitude. I have, for caring behind the gifts, yet you so touched by it. I do not have the words of gratitude I have for it, but I have, but I know that I, it is the American spirit and personal sacrifice that is worth serving to preserve. Please thank each of your donors, organizers, the teams, and the wonderful people of Boston for me. I will have this gift long after it has become obsolete, but it's the kindness it represents will never be replaced in my heart. I am truly grateful, I am honored to have been allowed to serve a nation and a people like you that makes it so great. Forever grateful Sergeant Stephen Hamilton, Flight Medic, Mountain Doustoff." So I wanna give everybody in this room a round of applause, to get a letter like that. You know, we started with an idea, if you could tell me about that, and I'm, believe me, this is a tearjerker, the tears were rolling down the eyes when we first got it. So now I wanna go to Superintendent Joanne Benton. We got asked to do a book fair, totally out of our league, but of course, and I was trying to figure out, how will we ever run a book fair? And it dawned on me, why don't I go to the superintendent of schools? She would know what a book fair would do. And so I went to Joanne Benton, and Joanne has run multiple book fairs at Barnes &amp; Noble in Burlington. So we work with Barnes &amp; Noble, book fairs usually only run one day, but they came with this idea, yeah, we're gonna go Veterans Day weekend, and we're gonna do it for three days. I'm saying, okay, we're really out of our league. No, we're way out of our league, how are we gonna pull this one off? So now I keep going back and forth, meeting with Joanne, and she goes, okay, we're gonna email all the principals on Thursday, we're gonna really email them, and as you know, we gave out coupons and they had an ID number, and if you went online, if you went in the store, purchase of the item at Barnes &amp; Noble, you got a portion of proceeds. So we go the first day, all Barnes &amp; Noble will tell us, saying we're doing amazing. Second day, we're doing amazing. Third day, we're doing amazing. We go back a week later, we got a call, come back in. We broke the record for sales for a first-time group. We did $5,000 of sales on Saturday, $5,000 of sales on Sunday, and $5,570 on Monday, continuing to the next week. So we sold $15,770, $570, which in turn, we got a proceeds of $3,027, which in turn bought 20 high-definition tablets and seven e-readers. This doesn't happen, I talked to Joanne about this, for a group that never, never did this before, they had different levels. We started novice, we went right to A level. It just doesn't happen. Okay, so that's the effort of our superintendent of schools. I wanna recognize another person that's involved in this letter, the director of the Bozzell Senior Center, Terry Marsiello, who's in back over there. She has got the seniors to write letters, and combine with the students. And the seniors wrote letters, and, you know, and this is, how do you get 1,000 letters from Wilmington? You know, a little town of Wilmington writing 1,000 letters. Well, you started in our schools, and then one teacher calls another one, you know, it starts snowballing here, next thing you know, it looks like we have a WB Mason truck we're bringing down to Walter Reed with all cases of letters. So in terms of that, our Dear Soldier program, right, each soldier got between 40 or 39 letters out of 126. That's how many letters they got. John Lawrence from the Gardner School System, grade 1212, Gardner wrote 400 letters. Harlan, Mass., 100 letters. Boxford, Mass., 150 letters. Billerica, Mass., 800 letters. And the list goes on and on. Tuesday, we are going to the scene program at the Ripley School, to the special needs section, they wrote letters. So we are first group to speak to our special needs group, who drew flags and stars on there. I just can't thank enough because it's leading into different avenues for us to be more exposed, and people go on our website and just can't believe what we're doing. You can see our website has really been built up, and that's a credit to him. This is the media relations guy, so I'm gonna give my hand myself.
Nothing to it.
Yeah. We just did a sponsor list. We now have 260 sponsors across the United States of America. Unfortunately, we had a World War II veteran, Edmund Amell, passed away October 31st, a Billerica custodian. He wrote in his will, all donations be made to iPods for Wounded Veterans. We received nine checks across from the United States of America, far as way as Oregon and Washington. We never had that happen before, that was, so a lot of people are involved now, and I just can't thank everybody enough. I mean, we have an idea, but to pull it off the way we're pulling off is, is something else. So I always say we're going in the cellar train, iPods is in car one, but Dear Soldiers won eight now, there's no, they're not in second place. So we're going back May 1st to the 4th, and our goal is to come up with 6,000 letters, we're at 1,000.
Dawn, are you ready?
Yeah. So I, it's just, to add on, we have schools calling us all over the place now, and we're going to New Hampshire, the Manchester School System, to open up Dear Soldier up in New Hampshire. So basically, we have Florida schools, Miami schools, we have State of Connecticut schools, and we have the state of Massachusetts that are writing a letter in the program. Between the VFW and the teams is reaching out to all these different organizations, and that is what happened. But in terms, what do the educators look at? They look at Wilmington, Mass., where it started, you know, how do we do this? You know, how do we develop this? How do we develop that? So I, you know, I wanna come back and celebrate the school system and recognize everybody, you know, every student that, you know, put their thoughts, and it's kinda like, all the different things, you know, that, you know, people didn't have to take this on. Certainly, our superintendent didn't have to take this on, you know, she's busy enough trying to get the new high school built before she leaves, you know, so she doesn't need me, didn't need me, meeting with me 10 times. But get acknowledgement from Barnes &amp; Noble, this went all the way to Madison Avenue. They wanna know what was going on in Burlington. You know, they have track of people, believe me, they watch their Ps and Qs over there. So what happened in there, we got invited to do the Christmas wrapping table at the Penitential Center, then we got one to, at Barnes &amp; Noble in Burlington, and this is where Terry comes in, she's got the seniors involved, Audrey Reed and Chris Murphy did wrapping at Burlington, and my wife Linda Cardello and Kathleen McKenna did the one up at Penitential, which generated more money to buy more tablets. And the reason, we buy in bulk, so we get $75 off each high-definition tablet. So when we went to Walter Reed, we have this giant goalie hockey bag on triple wheels. They come up with these funny sayings, so each hospital got 10 high-definition tablets. We've never even come close to that. And the soldier says, this is like Santa Claus at Target, they keep reaching the bag and more stuff's coming out of it. So it's kinda funny how it does, but it's just like the community coming together, you know, I just can't thank everybody, you know, school committee, anything like that, but it's a community taking responsibility for injured soldiers and say, we're not gonna, we're gonna do something here, whatever it meant, this is what the town of Wilmington has done. All our supporters in town, all our, everybody that, you know, we get contacted through. At 11:30 today, we got contacted by the West Point Society of New England, we've been picked as a charity this year, which they're gonna have a silent auction in front of 200 people, which could raise a lot of money. But this is like going, little iPods going up against American Cancer Society, American Red Cross. And they heard phone calls from the soldiers, and that's how we got picked. We got nominated by Bose Corporation. That's how far this has gone. I mean, I talked to Bob, and Bob really can't believe it. I mean, he, to be picked, you know, to be, it's just an honor to be picked by that society. So quickly, I just wanna end on this, 148 shirts by the Wilmington School System, this is it, and this is the big one, this is four wrecks. This is out, and Joanne pushed that, we sold 148 shirts, we sold 288 of them all, but this is why the Red Sox is winning, so she's kinda happy about that, okay? And, you know, and the senior center sold shirts and stuff, and just quickly, the seniors made, make these bracelets, and we have one company that wanted 100 of them, you couldn't keep up with the demand. Our insurance just bought 50 of them Monday, and we're gonna start making them again. And that's Terry, again, getting the seniors involved on Wednesday, and coordinating, we call beating clinic, whatever, beating classes, but we have the seniors involved. So I, it's kinda like, you know, for me, I'm kinda like the smoker, but Bob will tell you, there's 30 people involved here. They'll do all kinds of little, different things, whatever assignments, and they just get it done, one way or another, they just get it done. So let's go to Dawn Martel. Dawn has a very creative mind, to say the least, she comes up with these different things. She got the Wilmington Students Graphics Arts Department from the high school to make special blind Christmas cards, so the soldiers would write them out and give them to the family members, very creative. They flew out of the box, we couldn't get them enough. And then she created sayings on Christmas trees, but then taped a candy cane about. So that flew, all the families, kids took that, that went right out of the box, so that, but this is like, you know, like I said, I want, we wanted to recognize Dawn and superintendent, so I'd like to have Dawn Martel come up here for a minute. Dawn, can we please come up here? I wanna give Dawn a, wait a minute, I better get this right, so I better put my glasses on. This is our official certificate of appreciation. This is to certify that Dawn Martel is hereby recognized for the community service to the iPods for Wounded Veterans Dear Soldier Program, Wilmington High School, Wilmington, Mass., from January 1st, 2013, to December 31st, 2013. Call Cardello Chairman, and this is our official thing with our logo and our Boston Strong. Dawn, congratulations, you're really earning it the hard way. Thank you very much.
It's a team effort, it really is, and the kids have worked very, very hard.
So she's got another project, she has snowflakes that she wants me to see, that she's creating with the students, that we're, we're gonna get, we may have a big event at Hanscom Air Force Base. And now, we're gonna give Superintendent Joanne Benton something. What do you give the superintendent of schools? So we created something special, I know it's one of, kinda obvious, 'cause I wish I had one of these. You know, I really am, because it's kinda special. I'm just gonna read this, appreciation award iPods for Wounded Veterans. Dear Soldier, in recognition of your exceptional support of iPods for Wounded Veterans, I hereby present Dr. Joanne M. Benton, Superintendent of Wilmington Public Schools, 2013, this award of appreciation.
Thank you.
You had Joanne? Thank you very much. Thank you for everything you've done here.
Thank you, Joanne. Thank you.
I just wanna say, I wanna echo what John Martel said, but it's Terry, and Dawn, and Kristen, and unnamed people that went to Barnes &amp; Noble because they got an email from me asking them to help support- I just want to say, I want to echo what Dawn Martel said, but it's Terry and Dawn and Kristen and unnamed people that went to Barnes and Noble because they got an email from me asking them to help support the iPods. It's, it's students in the, a community who really, really care about our veterans and care about all that they have done for us. That's what makes up Wilmington. So it's, as Dawn said, it's a collective effort of seniors and students and teachers and parents and community members. So we thank you for getting us involved.
Thanks, thanks.
6,000? I don't know about that. We'll go with that. Thank you. Thank you all. Thank you.[1218.65][1218.65][applause]
I just, quickly, I want to mention the two people, Laura Duchesne from Barnes and Noble, Boston, and Danielle Patton from Barnes and Noble Burlington. They're the ones that come up with this idea. So I can't tell you, I don't know how we still raised over $15,000, but we did it. And also, I want to thank Mary Driscoll from Marvin Catholic High School, sent up four students that helped us out on that, on the community service project. So just in closing, we have public schools, we have private schools, and we, we have Catholic schools now writing letters. So that's where we're at. And I'm sure we'll have more projects down the road, but.
We have these two items here?
Yeah, we have two items. We have two banners, one for the West and one for the Sharshane School. A lot of the banners are hanging up in, in the schools. I don't know if you've gone and seen, if in the middle school, as soon as you go into the right, you see it hanging. If you go into Sharshane, I mean, if you go into the north, it's hanging in the cafeteria. And if you go into the Woven Street, it's right by the office, it's hanging right there. So we have two more banners that we're going to give out, we're giving out. And we start our school speaking tour Tuesday. And we already have, we got seven engagements already. So I just, in closing, the middle school, we had complications when we went there. The band had to go into the auditorium where we were supposed to go. We couldn't go there. But, you know, Principal Christine McMinnon, we went around to each class. She brought everybody in the hallway, right, and wrote Caitlin Consala's letter. And what it meant to her to have a student from Wilmington Middle School write that letter and, and told her, she was one of my, our students here. She wrote this letter. You know, what it meant to her to read it to new students. So that's what this program's all about. It's above and beyond the call to you. I don't know what else to say. Like, usually I talk too much. So I need a glass of water. But thank everybody from the school committee. Anybody wants to talk to me, you can call me. I left my card there. I left a copy of the letter. But that's, that's just one, one of the soldiers that wrote that letter.
Mrs. Carroll has a question.
Can you still get T-shirts? T-shirts still available?
Yeah.
Yeah. I've wore mine around, and so many people have asked me. So I've given them all your cards.
Yeah. We, we're open to any fundraising idea. If it's a dollar, if we can raise a dollar, we'll take a dollar. Believe me. I told Peggy Kean at the soccer field, a bumper sticker.[1393.51][1393.51][laughter] You know, so, but that's what we do. We, you know, we try to create different avenues or different revenue streams. And, you know, like I said, it's all volunteer. Nobody takes a salary here. So we're giving back, you know, what we can. But that's it. So our goal is 6,000. We got four months to get 6,000 letters.
Thank you, Terry. Thank you, Dawn, and family.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. That was great.[1421.13][1421.13][applause]
Thank you. Okay, that is excellent. Our next item is the DECA competition.
I just want to congratulate the 43 winners from Wilmington Heights who competed at the district DECA competition in December. We should all be proud of our Wilmington students as they continue to dominate the competition. Their success is a testament to all the skills and knowledge they've developed under the guidance of the Wilmington Public School staff. Congratulations to Krista Anderson and Megan Cool, who are their advisors, and to all the students who have participated. We are very proud of their successes. We have 43 students who will be going to the state competition in March. So what was exciting this year is there were three more school districts that joined in. Brookline was one of them. It raised the stakes, and we still came out with the most winners. So it's a wonderful program.
Very impressive.
I just have to say how impressed that I am that they placed in such a variety of different fields. And I, just very consistent, you know, across the boards with, with that. I just thought, very impressive.
I'd like to, in the spring, after the state competitions, invite the students who will go into the nationals to come present. I think you'd enjoy meeting them.
Definitely. That's terrific. All right, thank you. New business, the FY14 financial report.
You have before you the current financial report for the school department's general appropriation, including all expenses posted through December 20th, 2013. And the total appropriation was $33,628,350. We expended $12,395,684.95. We've encumbered $20,847.91.68. And we have a balance of $384,754, so we're in the black. I'd like to ask this evening for the school committee to authorize the Director of Administration and Finance to account for lane changes and contractual salary increases, and to allow him to distribute the circuit breaker offset to the appropriate special ed tuition accounts.
Does anyone have any questions on the report or comments?
Dr. Quick?
This, this really, it's just, I, I forget sometimes. What is the difference again between, what does the, the word encumbered mean financially for this?
It's an obligation we have that we haven't paid an invoice yet.
Has not been spent, okay. All right, thank you.
Or made a payroll.
Okay, thank you.
Right. Should we take this as two separate, or two separate motions?
Yeah, we can do it together.
Or do it together, okay. All right, I'll entertain a motion to allow the Director of Administration and Finance to, let me see, sorry, account for lane changes and contracted, contractual salary increases, and also to allow the Director of Finance to distribute the circuit breaker offset to the appropriate special education tuition lines.
Perfect.
Do we have, Dr. Quick?
Move just stated by Mrs. Kane.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Mrs. Carroll, all those in favor? Unanimous. Linda. Thank you, Mr. Ju. I know looking at this that you love doing this, but [laughs] that's all I'll say. You do a great job. You do a great job. I'm glad to see you doing it. We appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Can I just get ahead to future meetings before this?
Yeah, there's nothing.
Oh, there is nothing?
No.
Oh, all right.
Public comments? No. Okay. Other reports? The, Mrs. Brusseau, Superintendent Serge?
Sure. Just to let everybody know that the survey that we had discussed is now up on the main page of the district's website. So encourage everybody in the town of Wilmington that they can participate. It'll take less than five minutes. And the other thing is to let everybody know, we have another subcommittee meeting coming up next Tuesday, the 14th, at 9:45 in the Roman House.
Thank you. Okay, excellent. And correspondence?
We just got some Christmas cards from different people. Murphy Hess, Toomey and Lehane, the Micelles and the Katusian family. Also, thank you for Christmas cards. Great. All right, future meeting dates and agenda items?
So at the next meeting, we will bring back the budget. We met with Jeff Howell this week, so we'll have the budget recommendation. Please mark your calendars for February 3rd as the town manages budget presentation.
Okay.
And then the 12th and the 26th. We'll do the budget hearing on the 12th.
Oh, all right, that'll be the public hearing.
Budget presentation.
At the town hall, 7 o'clock.
You'll be away on business on the 22nd, so I won't be able to make it to that meeting.
I can fill you in on the budget.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll entertain, well, Happy New Year to everyone. It looks like we're getting a lot done, and it was, there was an excellent presentation that we had from Mr. Cardello. And so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Dr. Quick?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Mrs. Carroll, all those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you.